Good morning and welcome to City Hall. Samajh Van Zandt is here to lead us in the invocation. He's from Christ Church in Oklahoma City. If you would come to the microphone. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Shadid if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
May we pray. Most gracious and loving God, we thank you for this opportunity to come and gather together to handle the business of Oklahoma City. We pray now for your love to abound in this room, for compassion to be present. Bless those who are making decisions. Give them guidance by your Spirit so that they may perform the duties given to them with excellence. Now, God, we pray that you bless this day, that all of us find just a little more of you in us and working through us. Be with these, these those elected to do duties larger than them, that they may do it with a spirit of humility and servitude that is pleasing unto you. This is our prayer in Jesus' name. Let us all say, "Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Each month, the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City helps us honor one teacher chosen from out the entire Oklahoma City area as our Teacher of the Month, and I am proud to say this morning that Elena Kalaki is our winner this week. Would you come up and let's show our appreciation to Elena? We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Elena Kalaki has been named Teacher of the Month for February 2015 by the Edmund Public Schools Foundation and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Elena is an award-winning public educator that has developed her career over the course of a decade, working for three public Oklahoma school districts, and she is the current Edmund Public Schools Teacher of the Year. Whereas while fostering the education of her students within a array of disciplines, Elena has valued lifelong learning through professional development, colleague collaboration, and sharing best practices. Whereas successful high school debate programs, acclaimed middle school multimedia programs, award-winning yearbook designs, and elevated critical thinking skills are characteristics that merely scratched the surf of Elena's time in education, not to mention her time spent instructing Mercy Hospitals doctors and nurses through innovative healthcare software and teaching fundamentals of speech for the University of Central Oklahoma every summer. Whereas Elena's will to succeed through student achievement is unmatched among her contemporaries, as she consistently implements new and innovative teaching methods, keeping her students highly engaged. Whereas Elena values student leadership through organizing leadership retreats for Edmund Memorial High School and Oklahoma Association of Student Councils. Whereas Elena has presented educational technology for Edmund Memorial High School, Central Middle School, and Harding Fine Arts Academy. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Mayor and Council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Elena Kalaki on her selection as February 2015 Teacher of the Month by the Edmund Public Schools Foundation and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Now, you might think that it's all done, but we actually have to vote on this. So I'll ask for a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Ah, it's unanimous. What do you know? Let's show our appreciation to Elena.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I would not be here today if it were not for my students, and I encourage all of you to get very involved with your education systems because there are great things happening in our schools, and our students are accomplishing amazing, wonderful things every single day. So thank you for recognizing teachers. I greatly appreciate it.
Elena teaches ninth grade English, and I was going over some of the literature responsibility. She's got a full workload for these kids. So pass along our best, and I know they're gonna, they're missing you this morning, but I'm sure you'll be back in the halls this afternoon. Thank you so much, and this appreciation is all for you. And we also have a special guest this morning, not on the agenda, but Tim Rogers is here, who's just taken over as the Executive Director of our county library system. I'd love for Tim to be introduced to our audience. Tim, you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Tim Rogers. I'm the new Executive Director of the library. I've worked in several different states across the United States, including Kansas, Indiana, and most recently in North Carolina, where I ran a library consortium that served 200 academic and public libraries. I'm really excited to be here in Oklahoma County, Oklahoma City, to really continue the tradition of great library service started by Lee Brauner and continued by Donna Morris over the last many years. And so I'm really proud to have the opportunity, certainly to continue the opportunity, to partner with Oklahoma City as we build out libraries and help the schools do what they do, which is educate the youth. Of course, ours goes a little bit beyond that, where we not just support the students and the teachers, but where we support the parents as well. So as the largest educational institution across Oklahoma County, we're very excited to continue this tradition of library service to Oklahoma City.
And you're not here by yourself?
No, that's right. My wife and I are living right here downtown Oklahoma City and enjoying, I was sharing with the mayor a few minutes ago, that I had lived out in the, not even the suburbs, I had lived out in the country in North Carolina, and so now living in the city itself is really fun. I had forgotten what that was like and very much enjoying it, so.
Tim, thanks, and welcome to the show, as we like to say, and welcome to the community. I'm sure people are going to be interacting with you now and for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Let's show our appreciation, Tim, taking on that responsibility.
We're definitely working on that, and it is on my punch list. I will tell you, I had a meeting about that yesterday.
It's been on some of these punch lists for about two years now, so the poor lady's died since we've been...
We don't worry after her kid's gonna die.
Pat's gotta get a lot accomplished here in the next couple of months. He's got, I don't blame him. No one will care what you think three months from now, so you gotta use it while you can. All right, we are on item three of the council agenda. We've taken care of item three A, but we still need a motion and a second on B, C, and D. These are appointments.
What's the appointments?
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Four A is to receive the journal for February 3rd and 10th, and item four B is to approve the journal for January 27th.
What's the items?
Is there a second? All right. Comments or questions on the journal? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item five is request for, or actually, an opportunity for revocable permit, oh, request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, just a couple of things. On page 14, under unsecured buildings, item nine D1, 91. Item B, 7724 South Lynn, west of Abbey Stricken. The owner has secured. Item I, 3804 Southwest 41st Street, west of Abbey Stricken, the owner has secured. And then moving on to item nine E1. Item F, 7724 South Lynn, west of Abbey Stricken. Item H, 3309 South Meta Avenue, west of Abbey Stricken. And item S, 3804 Southwest 41st Street, west of Abbey Stricken.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? We'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are three items. Comments or questions on the MFA?
I have a question, Your Honor. MFA, B, provides for the installation of some signal lights, and one of mine always been on there at least 10 years, because it was on the council, it was on the agenda, it was approved by the Traffic Commission more than 10 years ago. Do we ever go out and reevaluate those sites, make sure that the need for the lights still exist?
I think we do. Let me, let's have Eric come in and verify that.
Okay, I appreciate it, because I think that one needs to be looked at again, because it may not be in quite the right place.
Okay. Eric, the question was on MFA B, some traffic signal improvements, and Mr. Ryan was looking at the one at...
MacArthur and South Shore Drive, is that the one, Pat?
It's at, no, it's TC, it's the first one on the list. It's Ann Arbor and West...
Ann Arbor, west of Hefner Road.
Bluff Creek is the addition, it serves, and it's lights right around the corner.
Is this where the apartment's entrance is?
Okay, we'll review the location of that one at Hefner and Ann Arbor.
Okay, and just as a reminder to the council, these are all 2007 bond listed projects. We'll look at it very closely, that, you know, the reason we're proceeding with these is these were actually listed projects in the '07 bond.
Yeah, it was approved about 10 years ago, probably, or more than that, because it was approved by the Traffic Commission before I came on the city council. Because the first homeowners association meeting I went to with the Bluff Creek people, they asked about their light, and I was, had been informed that those are included on our general bond issue, things, maybe some time before the light was installed. It's been over 10 years since the Traffic Commission's looked at it, and they justified at that point in time, they may want to look at it.
We'll revisit that.
All right. Thanks for bringing it to our attention, Pat. All right, ready to vote the MFA? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, just the claims and payroll today. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, two items.
What are the items?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comment on the item listed under the EAT?
Just a question, Your Honor. We're canceling a contract under OC EATA, and we're gonna pay him $25,782.80, or, I think it is, or $28, I'm sorry. And how much did we pay him already, and what was the original contract cost?
Let's see if Marcia can come in and answer those questions for us.
Thank you.
It's like magic, they just appear. Marcia, in regarding the EAT contract, how much have we paid them to date?
So the contract that we're canceling was based on very specific tasks, and fees were tied to those tasks. We're paying the contractor just for the tasks that are completed. We've hired an additional contractor to take over these responsibilities, SDS is the contractor's name. Have I answered the, I'm sorry, I have a hard time here, I have a cold.
The question was, how much was the initial contract, and how much have we paid on this contract?
The remainder of the contract was about $170,000, as I recall.
And the new contractor we're getting, is he gonna do the work for that $178,000? Are we gonna pay him extra?
The new contract will do two things. It's a larger contract. It will complete this work scoping out our future needs for solid waste facilities, like landfills and other options, and then it will proceed with defining options to help us with developing options for council's consideration as a part of the new bidding of our privatized waste hauler contract that's currently with Waste Management.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thanks, Marcia. All right, ready to vote the EAT? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
I put the items subject to individual consideration.
All right, are there any individual considerations?
W2, Your Honor.
W2? All right, thanks, Larry.
Mayor, seven U.
All right, Larry, you want to get us started with W2?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a brief mention, this is a project as part of the 2007 bond program. It's the intersection, the epicenter of this is the intersection of Southwest 15th and Council Road. It's going to resurface the road from Southwest 29th, north to Southwest 8th, improve the intersection, and it was put together to do all this work with the cooperation of Waste Connection, who is partnering with the city and also Weston Heights School to make this come about. It should be a nice addition to flowing traffic and adding to the safety of the school on Council Road. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thanks, Larry. And Meg, item U?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that this is an opportunity, again, to execute a nomination for a property for the National Register of Historic Places. This is the Czech Hall of Oklahoma City that's located at 515 Southwest 6th Street, and in the nomination, it talks about this building. It's located in a neighborhood that once served as a center for Czechoslovakian immigrants to Oklahoma City, provided a home for social events, a place for people to maintain customs and traditions, while also providing assistance with integrating into a new culture. And I thought it was interesting that the nominator of this property is a descendant of the organization founders, and he's seeking to have the, you know, history of the building recognized, and I went down to look at it, it's a very interesting little piece of property, so I just wanted to note.
Okay, thanks, Meg. Any other comments on the consent docket? We have a motion and a second, so let's vote. It passes unanimously. That moves us to the concurrence docket.
Subject to consideration.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the concurrence? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Now we're on to item nine. These are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 7 at 18100 Hogback Road. It's currently C3, community commercial, and it would become a double-A agricultural district if approved. John, that's way out there.
Way out there, Mr. Mayor, and you know, as you come down I-44 coming from Tulsa, you see that sign that says, "Welcome to Oklahoma City."
Yeah.
That's part of Ward 7, and just a couple of miles away from this particular location. The Planning Commission approved this item on January the 15th, and I am definitely in support of it, and I want to make two motions, one to approve and the other one for the emergency. And the emergency is the property owner has constructed the house in another location. They have to move the house, and so they are under a tough timeline.
Okay. Well, we'll take that as a motion then on item 9A1, voting on these rezoning first. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
And move for the emergency.
And John, you'll make a motion on the emergency? Okay, we have a second. Cast your votes on the emergency for 9A1, and it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 9A2 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 820 South Council Road. It's currently R1, single-family, and a scenic river overlay district, and it would become a new pod if approved. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Was the applicant present? Some interesting developments have occurred on this in the last few minutes, so what I'd like you to do, if you would, sir, is present what it is that the applicant is intending to do here, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. My name's Dennis Box. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. This is a piece of property that originally we had attempted to look at industrial zoning. If you look at the property around it, you've got C3, you've got the Outland Mall to the north, you've got I-2 and I-1, I-2 all around it. After meeting with Council McAtee, it was determined that this was a sensitive site, we needed to do a planned unit development. This planned unit development was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission, after reviewing it, and it's a mixed-use PUD, would allow industrial uses and commercial uses, but will meet the appearance corridor guidelines, which means that we're gonna have a 20% upgrade in regard to our landscaping. No screening will occur on the I-40 side, it'll all be behind buildings. With regard to this property, my client owns the property directly to the east. It is developed with a trucking company, and my client intends on connecting both the property to the east by putting a bridge over the existing creek and taking that to this property. Although the property has over 60 acres, only 29 acres can be developed based on the flood zone, which is on the south portion of the property. When we went to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission was very sensitive in regard to traffic, and so we are going to have to, when we develop, go back and update our traffic study. They were concerned about signs, so we did not get approval for any signs, other than approval that when we come back for a site-specific plan, we'll have to go back to the Planning Commission, and they'll review not only the buildings, but also the signs that we have proposed. This is a difficult piece of property to develop, but it'd be a piece of property that we think will be an enhancement. The letter that Council McAtee talked about, I'd not seen until Mr. Teener handed me a copy this morning. So in looking at the letter, it appears that the Outland Malls to the north has protested. It appears that they're concerned about the shopping experience to the north, and we don't have any plans on making that a negative experience. In fact, that's why we agreed to the appearance corridor guidelines, and I'm not sure who promised the Outland Malls that this property would be reserved for single-family, low-impact residential use, but that's not what the plan calls for, it's not what the surrounding zoning calls for. In fact, when the mall was built, you can see it was built on property that, a portion of it is zoned I-2, it's I-2 to the east, I-2 to the west, C3, and industrial southeast and southwest. So we think that our proposal, as the Planning Commission indicated, is a good proposal. We will have to go back for any approvals and get site plan approval. I've not talked to the protestors, as indicated, I just saw the letter this morning when Council McAtee saw it. So that's our proposal, and we're here to answer any questions.
All right, Larry?
Questions from the council at this particular time? Has anybody signed up, Francis? Nobody has signed up?
No, sir.
With no, nobody signed up, and with only a letter that came in, which was kind of nebulous in its intent, I move for approval.
What was the vote on Planning Commission?
Unanimous.
Okay. All right. Everybody ready to go? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward 8 at 7020 Northwest 150th Street. It's currently a planned unit development and would be a new pod if approved. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an area that is relatively undeveloped, there's some new apartment complexes going in there, so a commercial piece of property would be a good deal. I see the applicant is here with his attorney. Are there any questions from the commission about the council on this particular item? Planning Commission approved it, and I would move for approval.
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A3. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 1601 North Sooner Road. It's currently R1, single-family, and it would be a new spud if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Commission approved this item on January the 29th, and this is for, to develop a passenger rail facility. I had a chance to drive by this location on yesterday afternoon, and I move for approval then. They have also asked for the emergency.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on the rezoning of item 9A4. Comments or questions from anyone? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. John, you'll make a motion on the emergency.
And I move for the emergency. Second.
All right, cast your votes on the emergency, and it passes eight to one. We're now on to item 9B. This is an item that's being introduced to us today. This is part of a federal mandate, and it'll be a fee adjustment for our industrial discharge.
Having industrial discharge fees is a federal mandate. The amount of those is a local option on those, but Marcia's here to explain the whole process to us today.
Good morning. The industrial pretreatment ordinance is something that's required by the United States government as part of the Clean Water Act. What we propose today is to modify some of the fees associated with that program to help recover our total cost. The purpose of the program is to make certain that extra strong or hazardous wastes don't enter our wastewater system, so it has great value to us as well. The federal government proposes three, three pieces, three categories. There are federal categorical industries are the largest customers, the strongest potential waste. There are 36 of those customers. There are 112 significant customers, and that's just industrially graded customers who deliver us more than 25,000 gallons a day of treated wastewater to treat. Finally, the non-significant industries are primarily restaurants, and there are about 1,766 of those. So the current program cost is not being fully recovered, and that's a part of the federal requirement. The total revenue needed is $328,000. What we propose in this ordinance is a way to collect those funds. We have, by the way, held a meeting, we invited all of our industrial customers to a meeting. We had about 25 folks respond and attend the meeting, and we had another 25 send us questions about the ordinance, primarily about the impacts on them as an individual customer. We currently charge a federal, we currently charge our most significant customers a $500 fee for permits, and the smaller customers a $50 fee for permits. We also charge them a renewal fee that's half the cost of the original permit application fee. This proposal eliminates the second fee, the annual fee of either $250 or $25 a year, but then it adds an industrial, a monthly fee that's based on the volume of wastewater that's sent to us. We propose a three-year implementation to recover the, to recover the needed revenue. The maximum revenue is about $141,000 a year increase in, change in increase. And specifically, for our categorical customers, the worst case is a $2,800 increase in costs, which we will work with them to help ameliorate as well, changing overall between a half a percent and 1.8%, it's a range of total costs over three years. That's, again, a cost for some customers, this low is $2 a month, and for one customer is $2,830 a month. We are introducing the ordinance today. We asked that you set a public hearing for February the 24th and considered adoption on March the 3rd, and I can, I'm happy to answer questions, I have staff who will help me if I can't.
Marcia, we can go back just a minute. This Clean Water Act requirements were put in in the '70s, I would guess.
Yes.
Probably. And it was really for a couple of things. One is because of heavy metals and things that were being discharged, there was really prohibiting of those type of things that go into the wastewater, and so they require pretreatment for those type of things.
Yes, across the country, we use biological processes to treat wastewater, and so there are certain customers who deliver things to us that will harm the treatment process system. Not that, not necessarily that they're dangerous to everyone, but that the microbial system that we, that we build and operate to clean the waste might be damaged and produce a higher or unacceptable discharge to streams. It's all about protecting the streams that we discharge to.
And the other issue has to do with strong wastewater that is probably all organic, but not metals or dangerous things, but it's just stronger, like a meatpacking plant, and some of those have pretreatment, but if you have that wastewater that's so much stronger, more difficult to treat, then you get maybe with the same volume, it would come out of an apartment complex or something, then there's a surcharge on that, because it has a lot more suspended solids, and what's called BOD, which is, it relates to organic material that needs to be treated, to be taken out of the wastewater.
Yes, exactly. The United States, when the, when the law was passed, the United States built a lot of wastewater treatment plants for the public with federal funds. It therefore wanted to make sure that we were doing the most to operate those funds to manage those facilities well, and to make certain they produce the best quality wastewater for the nation's waterways. It's a longstanding program. It's one that works very well. We're very fortunate in Oklahoma City, we have great compliance with our ordinance, and it works for us very well.
But you actually have a section within the wastewater treatment division that goes out and puts out the permits, and you go out and inspect the facilities?
We do.
And you check, you take samples and check to make sure that they are taking out the metals they're supposed to, and that the...
Exactly. We test the wastewater, we help, we help... Exactly. We test the wastewater. We help where there's a problem. Counsel, from time to time, hears about backups into houses caused by grease, so you can imagine with restaurants, grease is the thing we spend all of our time on.
Marcia, I'm just curious, in terms of the category that reaches that highest $2,800 fee or whatever, what would they-- what category would that industry fit in?
That would be a great deal of flow, and it's probably a customer-- a very high flow.
Okay.
It's probably one of our larger customers, the FAA, Tinker Air Force Base are the two largest--
Okay, that makes sense.
--of the industrial customers.
Marcia, I have a question. Have we contacted, we the city contacted, the potential victims or--
Yes. We sent letters to everyone describing the program and inviting them to a meeting, and have received some comments back and had about 25 people attend the meeting.
We did have some comments back about the cost of the thing, or what was the nature of their comment?
Primarily, truly about the cost for individual customers.
But we can justify those costs.
Yes. What will it cost me? And we felt the conversation was favorably disposed.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Marcia. So the item just being introduced today, and if council moves this forward, a public hearing would be set for February 24th, and final adoption is currently scheduled for March 3rd. Any comments or questions from council before we seek a motion to move it on?
Yeah.
All right, cast your votes. Item moves forward. Item 9C is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9C? All right, how about a motion to move that docket?
We got it.
Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 9D is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9D? All right, how about a motion here?
We leave it.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9E is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Council may note, this is the first time, I believe, this has shown up on our--
This is. This is a result of our abandoned building program that we kind of had a false start on last year with the legislative session, and we kind of changed directions in going forward. Bob, Teener's here this morning to talk to us a little bit about the program.
Just briefly, as you recall, back in October, we asked the council to do an amendment to the ordinance that allowed several different things. One of them was to allow us to create an abandoned building program. And so the two, the dilapidated and the unsecured you just declared, we're asking you now to declare those as abandoned buildings. And once they go on the list, they'll be-- our staff will begin to track. One of the things that we did in the ordinance was it allows us to try to recover public safety costs. So these items will be on our list. Quarterly, we will check with-- we're working with police and fire. Quarterly, we'll check, and if there's been a call, a police or fire call, we'll assess the cost of that call, and then we'll bill that property owner. We'll give them a reasonable time to pay that cost. If they don't do that, then we'll certify that bill at the county, and that will attach it to the property. So we've been working on it a long time, trying to get our notices right, make sure everything's right, but I think we're ready to go. You're going to see 20-- there's 25 properties this time. I think next week, there's 10. It's going to vary, because we work them for a couple of weeks in advance, and some of them drop off because they abate, others we extend the time. So the number would be around 20 most of the time, 25.
Bob, what sort of feedback are you getting as your staff interacts with people who have these on their property?
This group, after the notice, we didn't get any replies from any of them, so--
You know, I think the whole focus of this, a lot of these are out of state, you know, they're abandoned properties, so that there isn't somebody that's keeping a regular eye on them, which is what we're trying to attack.
Okay.
And we're hoping if, you know, if there is a call, then that bill, when we send them the bill, that'd get their attention.
Right. Is anyone signed up to speak today on this, Francis? No one signed up to speak. Okay.
And then the only-- the last step of this is, once you're on the abandoned building list, if you want off, you have to make an application with the Development Services Department to be removed. And so at some point in the future, you'll see, it'd be similar to a claim. We'll make a recommendation to remove it or not remove it, but that's really the only other step to it.
Okay.
I think this is a really serious step toward, you know, going in those neighborhoods that are a little bit in transition right now and trying to recover them so they don't decline any further.
Comments or questions from council? All right, Bob, thanks. And this is a public hearing, and so I will have to ask verbally. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9E today? All right, how about a motion from council?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It moves on. Thank you. Item 9F is also a public hearing, and Steve Rhodes is here to talk to us on item 9F and 9G. And this has to do with HUD and a CDBG block grant and a letter that's going to allow us to cooperate and participate.
These are a couple of grants that were a result of the tornadoes last year. And with that, and Steve's getting up there, there were two grants that were awarded, one to the State of Oklahoma and one to the City of Moore, and we get dollars out of both of those. So Steve?
Yeah. Oklahoma City was affected by, as the manager was saying, tornadoes on May 19th, May 20th, and May 31st. The May 19th tornado basically hit Little Axe, Bethel Acres, far southeast Oklahoma City, and the city of Shawnee. The May 20th tornado obviously took out a good swath of the city of Moore and south Oklahoma City, and the May 31st tornado hit far west Oklahoma City, El Reno, Yukon. But that event was much more of a flooding event than the May 20th tornado. The map above shows that most of the blue dots are the flooding incidents, and it was widespread throughout the city and not in any kind of concentrated areas. And again, the tornadoes that hit Little Axe, south Oklahoma City, and Moore. State Department of Commerce received two allocations of funding that were associated with the Disaster Relief Appropriations Act of 2013. And I guess that's commonly associated with recovery from Superstorm Standing. The HUD secretaries allowed to take and provide funding to other areas that were affected by disasters following that adoption of that bill. Ultimately, Oklahoma City, out of the state's first $10.1 million allocation, received an award of $8.7 million of that. And out of their second $83.1 million allocation, Oklahoma City is due to receive just about $4.8 million of that out of that allocation, for a total of about $33.4 million. With the first round application, the city is undertaking about $4.8 million worth of infrastructure improvements, which include resurfacing and reconstructing about four and a half miles of our two little streets that were used as debris haul routes on southwest 149th, May Avenue, Penn, and southeast 134th Street. They're also resurfacing streets in the Stone Meadows neighborhood. We're doing some single-family housing rehabilitation and multifamily housing rehabilitation for about $1.7 million. We will be installing storm rooms and shelters of about $1 million, and doing some drainage master planning in the downtown area and in the Deep Fork Creek Basin. With the second allocation that we received from the state, we're making improvements to the Draper Treatment Plant of just over $24 million. Basically, we are improving the electrical system by looping it to better manage power into the plant, as well as installing permanent generators so that we can achieve 100 million-gallon day production, even if we lose power. And if bids come back favorably, we will also change, install the replacement of the suction flume, I think is what it's called, as well as provide another generator to make sure that we're at full capacity of the plant of 150 million gallons a day. By the way, the utility department, as well as the City of Moore here, that may be able to answer questions too if they're about specifics to the application. The map shows, also on the drainage side, I guess I neglected to mention, we're also improving drainage on South Walker, between 25th Street and the Oklahoma River, as well as the street segments that I mentioned before. Stone Meadows neighborhood is the neighborhood that we are addressing with the street resurfacing. There is a duplication of benefit requirement that we have to document. The streets shown in red are the Westmore neighborhood. That area is included in the bond issue, 2007 bond issue, so money has already been allocated for that purpose. And as reconstruction continues in that neighborhood, those streets will be resurfaced following repairs there. The National Disaster Resiliency Competition is the balance of funding that remains from the Disaster Relief Act of 2013, that HUD is issuing a competitive application for. There's 67 total applicants in the nation that are available before this. There are two in Oklahoma. One of them is the State Department of Commerce, and the other is the City of Moore. City of Moore asked us to participate with them for additional drainage treatment, or for additional water treatment improvements at the Draper Treatment Plant. The City of Moore is largely dependent on Oklahoma City for their public water supply, and it's improvements that are needed that will bring the resiliency of plant, ensure continued resiliency of the plant. The Oklahoma Department of Commerce application, again, we want to continue with more drainage master planning. Whenever we applied for the second application, or the second allocation of funding through the Department of Commerce, the city's Disaster Recovery Task Force, kind of overseen by the city's Office of Emergency Management, we provided the Department of Commerce a list of unmet needs. And one of the greatest needs was drainage master planning citywide. And we will go back in with this application to include additional drainage master planning. City's, you know, completing its comprehensive plan now, and there will be, you know, code improvements that are needed to help implement the comprehensive plan as it goes forward. Additional drainage improvement projects, there were about 15 critical drainage improvement projects that the Public Works identified, and we will be including those in the application, as well as some special needs housing for homeless, elderly persons with disabilities that were not addressed. And the filing map, it's kind of just a location of the various projects that were identified. Without, I'll take any questions.
Steve, why don't you introduce your associate from the City of Moore?
Yeah, Jared Jacobowski with the City of Moore.
Welcome. All right. Well, thank you, and this is a public hearing, so we're going to allow, if anyone has signed up or wishes to speak on this item today, about how these disaster funds are being used. Is there anyone here today hoping to speak on item 9F or 9G? All right, then we'll move forward. Steve, thank you for your presentation. Is there a motion on 9F?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then 9G, a public hearing on that item. All right, how about a motion on 9G?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9H, understand we do not need executive session on this item?
That's correct.
Okay, how about a motion then to move 9H forward?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9I, it looks like we do not need executive session on that item.
That's correct.
No, we need to approve the motion.
Move the item.
Yeah. All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then item 9J, it looks like we do need executive session on this item.
That's correct.
All right.
Executive session.
All right, we're voting on item 9J, and it passed unanimously. And item 9K, no update needed, so a motion to strike here would be in order on 9K.
Move the strike.
Cast your votes. That item is struck from the agenda. And then item 9L, is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9L? All right, how about a motion then to deny these claims?
Move the item.
Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 10 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of the four items listed under claims recommended for approval? All right, how about a motion? And a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 11 is items from council. Pat, you have anything for us today?
Just a quick question, Your Honor. On the construction of new projects, cities, streets, sidewalks, essentially, we've allowed the contractors to reroute traffic around their construction areas, which I think is a really good idea from the safety standpoint. However, last weekend, one of the contractors had a load of sand delivered, and it was deposited in an intersection that is a difficult intersection at best. It's at Hefner Road, Woodbridge and Hefner Road. And it made getting around that intersection very difficult. Do we have anybody to inspect those things, make sure that they don't cause a bigger problem they're trying to solve?
See if Eric can respond to that. Eric, last weekend, at Woodbridge and Hefner Road, we're doing some sidewalk construction, and the contractor, Pat has described, put a load of sand, fill sand in the roadway, and it made it difficult traffic for the weekend.
Yeah, I'm not hearing the entire question. I mean, we are obviously working with contractors when they're misusing the roadway.
Do we have any control over how they use that space that they've restricted?
The street specifically? Yes, absolutely.
They dumped a load of sand at Hefner Road and Woodbridge Road, which made that intersection more difficult than it is under normal circumstances. And it's not a good intersection anyway because of the topography out there.
So yes, the city absolutely has control of construction and laydown and approving spaces and use of right-of-way, so I think with your comments today, I will follow up on that and find what happened, because that wouldn't be normal for us to allow that to occur in the street. But if we were notified, we would immediately respond to the contractor to have removed it or do something different with it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
John? All right, Meg?
Mayor, just two quick comments. I really want to thank the Better Block Group for organizing the Love Your City Day. It was at Elemental Coffee on Valentine's Day appropriately, and we had so many folks that came by to express their interest in signing up for commissions and boards and learning more about the city. That was a really terrific event. So, thank you.
All right, David?
Just to follow up with Councilwoman Sawyer's comment, I got to stop by there, and it was a very enjoyable time to see the excitement from various citizens to be able to sign up. I think a couple of things. One, we have to somehow control their expectations now as so many signed up. There's just a limited number of boards and committee openings at this point in time. But secondly, maybe in regards to that, we look at membership on these committees and boards, and while experience is very good and helpful in many instances, sometimes we may have members that have been on a particular committee or board 10, 15 years, and perhaps a person to replace them might be appropriate. Nothing against that particular person, I'm just saying, kind of continue to move the actual membership to newer members of our community, just to gain different perspectives. And then finally, I hope that Christie and the other members of our outreach group, our media group, will work with the Better Block organization to have similar type of meetings throughout the city. It seems like where it was Saturday tends to be a hotbed of activism here in the city, and we could share that, those opportunities throughout the city, northeast, southwest, northwest, and just get greater participation from all citizens throughout the city. Thank you.
Pete?
I'm trying hard not to take that comment about being here too long personal.
That was limited to committees and--
All right. Well, I just want to be sure we--
I should have liked him.
The-- I was contacted this week about someone commenting about the outreach by our Public Information Office about anybody that had knowledge of the items that were removed from Byssant Hennion Park when it was renovated. And I got a suggestion that I think might be helpful, that pictures of the little monuments, many of them are very small, be posted on the website. I think people visited the website, and there may be some people that are trying to respond that way. We've lost the history of those, of most of those items. When they were put there, who put them there, what, that kind of thing. So perhaps if we posted the pictures of them, the article that was in The Oklahman about it had posted a picture of the Statue of Liberty that's over the replica of the Statue of Liberty that's in front of the county courthouse. And I know quite a bit about that, because I was there when they dedicated it. Not the original Statue of Liberty, just the one in front of the courthouse. But it reminded-- But it reminded me that the pictures themselves might enable people to respond to that so we could handle those things properly.
I'll work with PIO and see if we can make that happen.
Thank you.
All right, Larry? Ed?
I do, I have a situation that I just wanted to really let the council know about and really gauge kind of where the council's at on this kind of activity. And this has to do with companies coming into neighborhoods, buying R1 homes and then converting them into assisted living centers. And this is an example of one in a neighborhood in Ward Two between Penn and Western, just south of Britton. It's at eighty-five oh one North Georgia. And this company has pulled seven building permits with the City of Oklahoma City, and they're converting the garage and the inside of the house to an assisted living center to house five people. There's no notification of the neighborhood, and when the neighborhood learned of the permits and learned of the activity and tried to contact the company, they were told in no uncertain terms, this is legal under Oklahoma City zoning code, and there would be no need for discussion. This is, I think this company's maybe their fourth one. Can you go to the next slide? And this is how the company advertises, that they're providing, this is their website, it's called theheavenhouse.com. They're providing care and companionship for the elderly in a residential home. It advertises that there's twenty-four hour care from certified, well-experienced caregivers. Can you go to the next? This is, the services offered, meals, medication management, doctor and registered nurse care, exercise and activities, emergency support. So I asked the municipal councilor's office about this kind of activity, and was told that, so the eighty-five oh one North Georgia is zoned R1 single-family residential. And the Oklahoma City zoning code defines a family as one or more persons related by blood or marriage. I think that's easy to understand. But the other definition is that it can be no more than five unrelated persons living together as a family. So if you can have, like with Oklahoma City zoning codes, you can have any five unrelated people, and then they would be able to order caregiving services, I guess like any other family is the argument. So that's the introduction of it. I just asked Dan, because I've talked to Dan, can you explain, just, is there anything else you would add to that? And I just have a couple of questions, but anything else you would add to...
No, that's about what the situation is. It's a single-family residence, they have five or fewer residents living there, and the services that are provided are ones that could be provided to a single-family couple living there. So they're not, all those services would be allowed to be provided for a residence in a single-family district.
Is there anything in any ordinance that talks about commercial activity within a neighborhood, specifically advertising that commercial activity on websites, on newspapers, radio?
There's not anything specifically, but that's something that could be done with any rental property in a single-family neighborhood. You can, there's no prohibition, but it's advertising property for sale or for lease or for advertising it for the provision of certain services.
The assisted living center would need to be licensed by the state?
I don't know.
Okay. Do you know, in terms of best practices in other cities, is this standard in other cities or...
We really haven't looked at that. We can, but that hasn't been, to my knowledge, we haven't looked at that.
What would your thoughts be about parking? If you had five, if you have employees there, you have, I think, they have about a seven-minute video, they show different people coming up, looks like occupational or physical therapy, nurses.
Once again, there's no limitation as to parking or traffic in a single-family area. If you have a family that's got five kids and they've all got cars, and they've got friends coming over, it would be the same situation. There's not any limitation on the number of vehicles that can be parked at a particular residence.
Okay. Any thoughts or questions? I mean, is that, is this...
Councilman Shadi, this is just as I'm getting older. I don't see a problem with this per se. I think you bring up a unique situation where seven houses have been converted to provide this, but I would suspect in most instances, it's an isolated home in a neighborhood, and I don't anticipate these individuals are staying up late, creating a lot of noise and crowding in the neighborhood. So if you compare the activity in these homes with what could be occurring in homes, I would welcome this type of activity and...
Just to be clear, David, this is, it is one home. They had, they pulled seven building permits with the city, so electrical, plumbing...
Oh, I'm sorry.
All within one home.
I thought maybe seven homes within this block were converted.
No, 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 just one home.
Yeah. Again, maybe I'm getting old, but I could see this being an inviting addition to...
I do have one other of these up by near one hundred and twenty-second, and the neighborhood really doesn't like it. And one reason is you have ambulances coming in and out with some frequency. And there's just an aversion to commercial activity without any kind of discussion. So I don't know if these are in other parts of the city, in your wards or any other...
I can relate a similar example. In Ward Five, several years ago, a home was, a single-family home was converted to a place, I may be using the wrong term, unwed mothers, you know, were housed there. The neighbors were totally against it at first. Once they moved in, their mindset changed within a matter of months. They became even more supportive of this group and the efforts that they were providing to these ladies, and there were none of the problems they anticipated. And it was just people helping people in a residential area. So as long as problems don't escalate in this kind of example, I'd say let's allow this to take place. You know, the amount of cars, we had our two boys when they were both in high school at the same time, and then their friends, gosh, I hate to think of the number of cars we had, you know, at our house at times. It just happens, you know? But you try to make sure they don't create trouble other than the issuance of having numerous cars there at one time.
I was also under the impression that we actually can't enforce that five-person rule because of the equal opportunity housing, and then this came up in...
It came up with respect to group homes for alcoholics and addicts because they're protected, because they're considered disabled. There's a possibility that, say, the people that are in one of these residents have Alzheimer's or something like that, they could be determined to be handicapped. But other than that, we can enforce our five-person limitation.
Well, there's one in Ward One that's just like this. Yeah, we kind of had the same, kind of had the same discussion with that. I don't personally have a problem with it. I think that it's, you can view it, like David said, as a positive to the neighborhood.
Ed, what was the nature of the complaints that the neighbors had?
Which, well, I have one in the north, and it was the lots of ambulances coming in and out with some frequency. Here, it's that you have commercial activity in the neighborhood, there's no dialogue between the company and the neighborhood, and really bordering, not hostility, but, you know, that this is the law, and there's nothing you can do about it, and we're not going to talk to you about it, is, I mean, that's what the neighborhood's telling me. So this is under construction. I mean, so I don't, this isn't, this hasn't occurred yet. It does seem like there's a loophole in the Oklahoma zoning code. I mean, this is not a family, I mean, this is people that could come and go. I mean, it's a commercial business. I mean, that's...
But our zoning allows commercial businesses in residential areas, is how you call. We had an example on Wilshire Boulevard of a house that had been turned into an interior design studio. And the ruling I got from our law department at that point in time was that as long as they were all related to each other, that they could do that, as long as they didn't get above a certain number. And we found out that one of their designers was not related, so they shut it down and moved it out. But we, it could have been a barber shop, it could have been a hairdresser, it could have been an accountant, it could have been a lawyer, a doctor, somebody who's operating out of his house, and as long as he complied with our ordinances to deal with that, which is the relationship between the employees and the people who live in the house, they're okay. From that standpoint, I don't, I'm not sure that there's any basis to do anything but approve this sort of thing, if it ever came to council.
I definitely see a parallel between this and a daycare, a home daycare also. They're pretty similar.
There is also a youth unit in R1 that's a permitted use for group homes for the aged, handicapped folks, and that's why, for example, the Oxford House falls under that.
I was just going to call, I have a number of them in Ward Six, Dan, most of which are related to Oxford House-type programs, but I have them scattered throughout the ward.
I know of one other example that I was going to bring up is in Surry Hills. There's one, it's a carriage house, they're an organization that provides these services, and they were going into an area of Surry Hills, and the Surry Hills Neighborhood Association appealed the interpretation of our ordinance to the Board of Adjustment, and the Board of Adjustment overruled that appeal and determined that our interpretation of the zoning code with respect to these type facilities was correct.
Okay. Yeah, Larry?
Yeah, you mentioned the Oxford House, and that was quite a hot topic several years ago. And some federal regulations kick in on this also that we have to be aware of, what we can and cannot do. And there are three houses in one of the neighborhoods that I have right now, and that people have bought up and are going to put it into, I'm going to use the term, a group home type setting. And it's my understanding that when you get what Oklahoma law and federal law comes in, a lot of these things are legal, and there's nothing you can do to prevent it. Hopefully, the people doing it would reach out to the neighborhood, and the neighborhood would reach out to them and see that there is a need and a part of the community, but that always doesn't happen.
It sounds like it is legal, I mean, based on the zoning code. I guess one question is, where did, how do we come up with the number five unrelated people can live in a home? I mean, is there some basis for that, or is that...
That's a fairly standard provision in zoning ordinances. That's just an arbitrary number, but that's one that's typical in other zoning ordinances.
In other cities or just within Oklahoma? Okay. Presumably, if that number goes up or down, it would affect the profitability. So, I mean, is the council comfortable with the number five? Sounds like we are. All right, thanks.
All right, James? All right. City manager reports.
We have Mike Carrier here this morning to give you up his quarterly update on convention and visitor's bureau activity. Mr. Carrier?
Mr. Katz, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's good to see you all again. We are halfway through our fiscal year as council and the city are also, since we are on the same time calendar. But it has been a, it's been a good year so far. We see some very good things coming in the second part of the year. But just to give you a quick recap, most significantly, interest in Oklahoma City continues to rise. There are people out there that like what we're doing, they are interested in us, want to come here to see. So to, just to hit some of the high points very quickly in the convention, sports, and equine sales, the number of groups, let's see if I can, there we go. The number of, there it is. The number of sales leads is up by twenty-two percent in the first six months, which is a nice increase. That has resulted in potential room nights increase of about forty-nine percent, some larger groups that we're working with, particularly as we move forward into the coming years. Bookings are up by twenty percent. Unfortunately, at the present time, the room, the definite room numbers are down a little bit from where they were last year. But I can tell you, we've got some things on the horizon that we expect to go definite in the second half of the year that will certainly turn that around, and we will be in the positive by the end of the year. At the same time, the number of groups that we are working with, our servicing folks, once a group comes here, they've decided to hold their meeting, they need help and assistance. Our numbers have gone up about thirty-five percent this year as opposed to where we were last year. I want to share something with you that kind of plays into all of this of how we are going about getting people to be interested in Oklahoma City. And take a look at us, and I'm going to pass one of these from each end. Don't be surprised when you open it, there's nothing wrong with it, but don't be surprised when you open it. But this is a direct mail piece that we have sent out to some four hundred meeting planners Inside is a credit card-sized video player. And what we found in some focus groups we had talked to in the past year as we were looking at rebranding the Bureau and talking about things to do here, was that we can tell people all day long, but meeting planners, colleagues, that have had a successful meeting here in Oklahoma City are by far the best advertising we can have. Well, this is three different meeting planners that we interviewed that had held some significant meetings here, did short videos, put those on this direct mail piece, and had mailed it to a targeted group of about four hundred planners that we want to talk with for the future. Some of these would be coming here in seventeen or eighteen, some of them might be twenty-five, twenty-six. But it's a way to get them to pay attention to Oklahoma City from what their colleagues are saying as opposed to the CVB, a hotelier, other folks in the community that are a little bit jaded as to the positive things about Oklahoma City. In addition to this one, we have a second one with three additional folks that will be going out this spring as a follow-up to that same group of people, continuing to repeat that message and trying to get them to come here and take a strong look at Oklahoma City. Obviously, as we get into more work on the new convention center, this will be vital to our efforts. As important as the convention meeting, equine part of the business is, leisure tourism is also very important. We have seen a seventeen percent increase in the booking and hosting of motor coaches this year. Now, some of that depends on what's going on in the community in terms of things like exhibits at the Museum of Art or at Cowboy and Western Heritage Museum or some of our other attractions. But we're seeing more and more interest in the motor coach market. And what that means is that we have seen about a twenty-seven percent increase in the number of passengers and about a twenty-one percent increase in the number of hotel room nights that have been used so far this year. We think that will continue to grow as we continue to work that market. It's a good, solid market for Oklahoma City and certainly fills a need in some of the hotels around the community. Our marketing communications folks are also working very hard. We continue to work to improve our website and to continue to look at the platforms whereby people can view our website. We've seen a forty-nine percent increase in the number of unique views of our website again this year. We keep waiting because double-digit increases have got to stop at some point. But right now, we're having double-digit increases almost every month, year over year, and this is a pretty phenomenal thing for us. We're in the process of developing a new website that is called a responsive website that means the same website will work on desktop, iPhone, iPad, any device. It will resize itself automatically, so all of the information is on one site. You don't have to have multiple sites for people to view. We also pitch stories. You may have seen some of the stories that have been out in things like the Inflac magazines or other travel journals. We pitch journalists to write stories. We tell them the things going on here. We've seen a huge increase, four hundred percent this year over last year. It's not easy to get these, and so we've seen some significant increases. And then stories that we have assisted with, people that have called us and said, hey, I'm coming to Oklahoma City, or I was there, and we're going to write a story, can you all help us in some way? A forty-eight percent increase there. The rubber meets the road when it comes to dollars. And the great... And the great thing, and you all have seen this in, in reports you've gotten from Mr. Couch, is the continual increase in our hotel taxes. Forty-three of the last 48 months, we have seen an increase in the hotel tax, and the, the total increase, as you can see here, and this is at the midpoint of each of these years, from 5.7 million up to 7.5 million over the last four years, is a significant increase in our hotel tax. Our supply last year, in terms of, and this was calendar year, the new hotels that came on board increased our number of room nights by about 3% from 5.6 million total room nights available to about 5.8 million, and the demand also increased from 3.7, 3.76 to right at 3.8 million room nights actually used. That 38,000 meant that we finished the, the year with a 65.3% occupancy, with the national average occupancy being 64%. So we exceeded the national occupancy average, even with more hotels being built, and a, and a, a good demand here in Oklahoma City. We're pleased with what's been going on. I've told you before, you know, it's, we look at, we look at this as, no matter how good it gets, it's like Jell-O, there's always room for more. And so we continue to be out there looking for new business, talking with people. You know, we, we have some very interesting things on the horizon that we hope to be able to announce to you later this year, that we think are going to, to be very positive aspects of business for Oklahoma City for years to come. And so appreciate your support, appreciate the, the city staff and the support that they provide to us, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Questions for Mike?
Mike, how is the new branding being received? The OKC-ing is believing?
It's much better than what we had ever anticipated. I mean, it's great. We continue to get really nice comments about the new OKC logo, and exactly what we had hoped to get, which was people coming through saying, I've always wondered what that thing was. You know, and it's so nice to see it the way you all are using it, you know, and, and have it spotlighted. And so, you know, we're getting some very positive remarks about that, and comments about the, the new brand being fresh, you know, being something that is unique, being something that is, is different. You know, and so, good, good comments and good positive reaction.
Jeff?
What, how much do you hear about direct flights to Oklahoma City? Is that a, I know it's?
Um, yeah, I don't know the exact number right now, but we're up to about 22, 21, 22, 23, somewhere in there, direct flights. In cities our size, and, and many major cities around the country, while we don't have as many direct flights, we have good direct flights to some very crucial hubs around the country. It's hard to go anywhere from any city unless you're flying from a hub to a hub without taking two legs, which is typically what we have. The challenge we have, and I know, I, I talk to the airport folks on a fairly regular basis, and I know they're continually working on it, the challenge we have is the lift, the number of seats available. We've got good routes, it's trying to make sure we have the right-size equipment. We know that the airlines are changing equipment out and introducing, particularly with the regional jets, as I understand it, some larger regional jets that will go from 75 to, say, 100 seats, or something of that nature. The airlines are just like the hotels, they watch yield management, and when they see lost revenue because they're not able to accommodate everybody that wants to fly here, you know, they're, they're looking at that and trying to figure out how to maximize. So we have good service, we always, it's, again, it's Jell-O, we always want more.
Right.
You know, and there's, there's room for more, it's doing it the right way, and the airlines certainly pay attention to that.
No, but in the last few years on direct routes, to the West Coast, we've added LA, we've added San Francisco, and July 1st, we will be adding Seattle. Into the East Coast, we've added Newark, New York, Newark. We've added more flights into Washington, we've added Charlotte, and we have seasonal to Orlando. So those are pretty good add-ons over the, just the last few years.
Right. Yeah, and, and we've added, with the, with the merger of Airtran and Southwest, we've added more flights to Atlanta. You know, obviously, Atlanta is the largest, or the most trafficked airport in the United States, you know, so, again, the, the airlines, Mark and Karen and the folks at the airport continue to work this, and, you know, we appreciate their efforts and continue to support them every way we can.
Let me ask you about, I mean, as you, as we get deeper into the convention center, obviously, you're gonna need a parking garage, some would say you need a hotel. Couple of weeks ago, it was introduced that we're, that one funding mechanism could be a tax increment financing zone. Are there alternatives to a, a new TIF in your mind to funding a convention center parking garage?
That's not something that I'm...
That's not your?
That I'm very involved in and have never really been, been involved in anywhere else, so it's hard for me to say, 'cause I don't, I don't fully understand the whole TIF process and other, I know the city has a variety of funding mechanisms that they can use. I'm, I'm interested in the results and filling the hotel and convention center, and bringing in all the money we can to help...
Right.
Help solve those.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike, thanks very much.
Thank you all.
We appreciate your work, it's a lot of good news in there, appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Mr. Mayor, we also have the December 31st Quarterly Investment Report, we'd be happy to answer any questions. If not, that concludes the manager reports.
Okay. Onto Citizens to Be Heard, we have a couple of people that have signed up, I'll ask them to keep their comments to the council to three minutes or less, and our first is Suzanne Grimes. Good morning, Suzanne, we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, my name is Suzanne Grimes, and my address is 6416 North Ann Arbor Terrace, Oklahoma City. And I live in Lakeview neighborhood, which is the reason why I'm here. For example, speaking of years gone by, it's been about 17 years ago that I was here speaking to the city council and our, Mr. Mayor, and our, our Lakeview needed drainage, storm drainage improvements then, and the city was so wonderful to help us and enlarge our storm drainage system then, which has worked for a number of years. However, we have a development to the west of our neighborhood in War Acres, and that is what brings me here today. My neighborhood is located west of Meridian, north of 63rd, and south of the Northwest Expressway, and Ann Arbor Terrace is the last street in Oklahoma City to the west of our neighborhood. There is a neighborhood map, and somewhat about 2008, whoops, 2008, people in our neighborhood did join and go to War Acres planning meetings, and this was in relationship to the area, to the west, named Warfield area, to be developed. And we announced, several of us said that we're very concerned about receiving extra storm drainage from their area when it would be developed, because we'd have extra runoff from roofs, from the streets, driveways, and sidewalks. And that was in 2008, and in 2009, we also attended those meetings. Since then, there have been about a dozen houses that have been built in the development, which is here in this area. So already, we have found that our current drainage system is lacking. We've had mud washed down on 67th Street, washed down into our neighborhood, and also overflowing our existing storm drainage, which is there at 67th and Ann Arbor Terrace, where's an opening where it carries it on northeast and toward Lake Hefner, out on the other side of the Northwest Expressway.
When did these, when did these events occur?
Okay, which event first?
Well, you're, you're talking about additional mud and debris coming in.
Okay, that occurred this last summer with a rain shower that we had in July, and I can help...
While, while you're looking it up, Jim, let me ask you, how do we deal with another municipality on drainage issues, when, when obviously it's the best interest of everyone to connect these drainage systems? How does that work, and, and who decides what's appropriate when it's not in our jurisdiction?
Well, first of all, I mean, the flows are natural, so they go down natural pathways. FEMA has some overall guidance in those, and so their drainage ordinances are probably not significantly different than ours. Eric might be better.
I, I think the biggest issue that she hasn't talked about yet is that, how much have they built it up behind their fences?
Right.
I mean, it's, it's just, it's almost as tall as their back fence, and so the runoff is almost going, is basically going over their fence.
Yeah.
And so it's, it's a really strange, I don't, I honestly have, it's been going on for about a year.
Yeah, I've seen the construction.
I didn't, I didn't realize that it had, that they had built the, the dirt up to, to that level, and so, I, I don't know what to do, but it does feel like there is something that we should be able to do.
Eric?
We, we've had one gentleman, Herb Leonard, speak with some of the city engineers and, and try to get attention. However, you know, I said, well, I've spoken to the city council before, it's no problem here, y'all are very nice folks. And anyway, this is a, a view from War Acres, looking at our neighborhood, this is a stockade fence, looking towards Ann Arbor Terrace. The people on the west side of Ann Arbor Terrace, their backyards back up to this development. This is what it looked like before. This is where they have added all of this extra dirt. They have changed the topography of the development, and this is where we've received additional runoff. And here is, you know, you see the road grader up at the level of the, about an eight- or 10-foot stockade fence, which out, looking out our backyard, so to speak.
Well, do we, do we typically send engineers out to, in situations like this, once it's been brought to our attention? Eric, can we send somebody out to look at this, and kind of to report back to Councilman Griner on, on, you know, kind of a best practice here?
And here, here's the rain in the, in July, cascading over the stockade fence that I was talking about, into people's backyards.
Okay. Suzanne, I, I get the problem, and I, and I, I'm acknowledging it. So here's what I'd like you to do, can you leave those materials with Eric?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Why don't you leave them with Eric, and Eric's gonna send some people out, or go out himself, and take a look at it, and then I suspect we're gonna have to have some conversations with the city of War Acres about what we're seeing.
And I think to update the council, you know, I have not had the pleasure to meet Ms. Grimes, but she has been in contact with public works staff, so we've actually made some initial site visits. There's actually a project currently planned at 66th and Ann Arbor, which is some additional inlets that are gonna help get that water into the system a little more quickly, but it's not complete today. But this is gonna take some time for us to evaluate, as it is another municipality that we're dealing with. We are familiar with the engineer that's part of the new development, but we haven't received plans yet, so we will take those plans and evaluate, and we may propose some future projects.
Okay. Well, I, I don't remember just a huge rain in July of last year.
It wasn't.
Perhaps there was one day, when there was one, but, but if she's having issues on what might be considered, you know, just a, a run-of-the-mill rain, then we, we, we better do something before there's a significant flood, you know, because...
So I'll be happy to meet with her, and we'd love to receive the additional information. The photographs would be very helpful.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I mean, we'd, considering we've been in a drought for so many years, when people are having flooding issues during this time of, of our, of our seasons, it's concerning to me. Suzanne, if you'll, if you'll leave that with Eric, we'll follow up, and, and Councilman Griner will, will be able to get back with you.
I am aware, or we are aware, that the city, or someone, has additional, my uncle used to call these whistles, but anyway, I guess they're those things that the water's supposed to go through. My understanding, as you can see, this is me standing there, I'm only five foot two, no eyes of blue, but they're only about three feet in diameter, and our existing drainage is three feet in diameter, however, was understood, it was supposed to have been five feet in diameter, and so I don't think the three feet is going to take the capacity. And also, what I've, since, if we are bound to have this extra runoff, I am maybe hoping for a culvert to be open to carry this water away from our homes and our foundations of our homes, and, and have it go through the backyards here between St. Mary's Place and Bar, and help carry it, and have something, I don't know, to give the people on Ann Arbor Terrace relief from the cascading immediate, you know, just run over. But anyway, we need help.
Okay.
So...
We, we get it. Thank you for coming down and drawing it to our attention, and if you'll, you'll talk with Eric, and give him those to him, then he can, he can work with you.
We, we, we did have flyers, I, and I got that response, and this has just been in the last week. Someone, you know, Mr. Herb Leonard, bless his heart, he's been in the neighborhood for over 47 years, or since the very beginning. I've been in the neighborhood for, going on now, 27, and so we just needed to get everybody kind of together to approach the city council and engineers. So we will appreciate any of your help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Suzanne. Morning, William, we, we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
William, excuse me, William Gonzalez, 801 Caroline Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma.
Okay.
I just wanna start off with, on December 16th, 2014, on the city minutes, Citizens to Be Heard, William Gonzalez spoke to complain about the police department. That was all that was in the minutes of the city council. March 11th, 2014, City, Citizens to Be Heard, William Gonzalez, 801, spoke to some code enforcement issues. I just wanna get this straight, when I tell my friends, children, and grandchildren that it's a waste of time to speak at the city council if they're gonna just give you lip service, I talked to Larry Mcatee there, and told him that I thought the police might be gonna whitewash and sweep this thing under the rug, and he said, he assured me that, no, there's no way they were gonna do that. When I made my formal complaint to the police department, and I go down to make my formal complaint, the officer that was involved in the stop is the one I was supposed to give my complaint to. That's letting the chicken, I mean, the fox guard the chicken coop there. City manager said, if you don't get any results from them, come talk to me. I came to talk to them, they didn't do anything, just said, okay, same thing as the other one. Now I brought up and showed the city council pictures and documentation that units were put in wrong, and code official didn't check it, didn't do it right. I've sent six emails to Larry, the mayor, haven't heard back from anybody saying they're gonna do anything wrong, they're gonna do anything about it. So that's the way I figured that talking to the city council is just lip service. I don't think you're gonna do anything about it, wasting my time. I'll make sure I tell my kids that, in this supposedly democracy where y'all have been voted in, to help citizens, you don't do anything. My other question is, are you gonna do anything? Mayor?
Mr. Gonzalez, this is your opportunity to speak to council, but I can assure everyone who's watching, if you've sent even one email, you will get a response. I can't speak to your specific concern today, but thanks for coming down. I can't speak to your specific concern today, but thanks for coming down.
I'm Jack Warner, I live at 3625 North McKinley Avenue in Putnam Heights, and I have six questions about TIFs, and one question about allocation of money from the Oklahoma City monies to the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, and I'll just leave those with you, if you would be kind enough to perhaps email me and, and answer, I'll get that to our Putnam Heights Neighborhood Association.
All right.
I'll give a copy.
Thanks, Jack.
Appreciate you hearing me.
All right. We have executive session, and we will be back.